County Commissioners Staff Meeting. May 21st, 2024. And we've got some special guests and special presentations to make. We've got proclamations in recognition of Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islanders Heritage Month. And we've got some great folks that we're honoring. So we are going to go ahead and get started. Get my proclamations together here. Hold on one second. First proclamation is to John Nelson. All right. And the first part is the same, but I'll read it and then we'll go to the others. But whereas observed annually, May is AANHPI Heritage Month, and the Hamilton County Commissioners celebrate and honors the invaluable contributions the AANHPI communities have made to our nation's culture and arts, law, science, technology, sports, public service, and more. Whereas Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders make our community more vibrant through diversity of cultures, languages, and religions. There is no single story of the AANHPI experience, but rather a diversity of contributions that enrich America's culture and society. Whereas John Nelson was born and raised in India and moved to the United States in 2008 for higher education, where he attended Temple Baptist College in Springdale, Ohio, graduating in 2011 with a bachelor's in Christian ministry. Whereas Mr. Nelson embarked on his distinguished journey in public service in 2012 as a public relations specialist with Hamilton County's Conservation District, heading the Regional Stormwater Collaborative, which brought together 10 communities in Hamilton County and six neighboring counties. And whereas in 2017, Mr. Nelson received naturalization and became a citizen of the United States, while also graduating from Arkansas State University with his master's in public administration. And whereas in 2019, following Mr. Nelson's completion of graduate school, Mr. Nelson was appointed by the Board of Supervisors of the Hamilton County Conservation District as the interim director and was promoted to executive director in 2020. Whereas during Mr. Nelson's time as a director, he focused on growing the district's urban agriculture program beyond its traditional audience to underserved urban communities focusing on food deserts and improving access to fresh and healthy foods. And whereas Mr. Nelson currently serves as Jobs and Family Services Assistant Director of Finance and Operational Support, where he leads the fiscal contracting information systems and building services teams. Whereas throughout Mr. Nelson's dynamic career, he has served numerous, he has received numerous accolades and has been certified by the U.S. Green Building Council with the LEED AP credential and distinguishes those with advanced knowledge in green building. Whereas Mr. Nelson serves as a true inspiration and role model to the community, demonstrating unwavering commitment to public service, environmental stewardship, and social equity through his innovative initiatives and dedicated leadership. Therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners, on behalf of its residents and the entire community, hereby extends its deepest gratitude and appreciation to Mr. John Nelson for his contributions to Hamilton County and unwavering dedication to investing in the betterment of Hamilton County. Be it further proclaimed that the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners does proclaim that May 22nd, 2024 be known as John Nelson Day in all of Hamilton County. Before you give comments, I'm gonna open it up to our commissioners if they'd like to say a word. Vice President Dre House.
Thank you. I don't wanna go too long because I want to hear from John. Congratulations, John. So a couple of years ago, we wanted to make sure that we were recognizing the AANHPI community in Hamilton County. We do recognitions for different parts of the community that lend, as Commissioner Reese said, to the fabric, to the vibrancy, to the diversity of our community, and celebrate all the contributions of the individuals that represent the community. And so here we are today. And so thank you all for coming down here, first of all. And so we all have different individuals that we're gonna recognize and declare different days, but really grateful that you all took the time out to be with us here today. And John, in particular, as a member of our team, congratulations. It's especially sweet to have you being honored.
Awesome. Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you. Thank you, John. You've done so much in our community and the region. And I'm specifically excited about what you will do in JFS and the impact you've already had. So congratulations.
And it's, I learned a lot. Wow. Just glad to honor you today. But would you like to say something?
Commissioner Reese, I did. I did write down a few quick notes because I think that, you know, I'm here because of other people and I do want to acknowledge those folks before, for this. You know, when I came to Cincinnati in 2008, I came knowing no one here in the area. I came on, off a Delta plane in the airport, absolutely knew no one. Didn't know what the next 15 years would look like. And I wouldn't have the slightest idea that I would be standing here in front of you all. So it is, you know, borrowing from the words of President Washington, in a lot of ways, these opportunities have been providence. And I'm glad that I'm here where I am. But I did want to extend my thanks to my family, who's been a huge part of my support system. And, you know, without them, I couldn't be where I am. So really thank them and other Asian American people in this area who've come before me, who've set the, you know, the path, who've been trailblazers in setting up support systems for people like me in this community. But most importantly, I did want to thank the other public administrators here in Hamilton County who have taken time to invest in me. You know, I could list off names, but Michael Patton, Director Patton, John Brugan, Holly Christman, Brad Johnson, Ralph Linney, Joe Felkham, Harry Blanton, Andy Knapp, James Nois. Just these people have poured into my life. And I'm so thankful for them, you know, for taking interest in an immigrant kid, you know, and, you know, really investing in who I was as an individual, as a professional. But the person that I have to recognize is Administrator Aludo. And, you know, he really recognized, he recognized me for who I was even before I had faith in myself. I still remember as a PR specialist, just starting off in the agency, I sent him an email and I didn't expect a response from him. But he immediately responded and took time to meet with me. And, you know, I asked him, you know, I was doing my MPA at that point, at that point of time, I was just starting off. And I told him, Administrator Aludo, I'm not sure if this is the path for me. And, you know, he inspired me to stay in public service. And I'm glad he did because, you know, now I'm very thankful, you know, to quote Commissioner Portoon, former Commissioner Portoon, you know, "Public service is now in my blood." You know, "It is what I am. It is what I love to do." And it has become part of who I am. And that's thanks to Administrator Aludo, who really invested in me as an individual and all of the other public administrators. And, you know, I was reading a study just a few years ago as to how Asian Americans are the least representative group in public, in public administration and local county government. And, you know, if my career can inspire other Asian Americans, Pacific Islander folks, to come into public administration, to serve their communities, to serve Hamilton County, that's the best thing that I could ever give to this community that has called, made, made a home for me as an immigrant. So thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna come around and take a photo. We come around, take a photo.
Sure.
You did, you did. Wonderful. Thank you.
One, two, three. Thank you.
One more, please. One more, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Next up. Henry Lee. Like I said, the first two paragraphs of the wheres are the same. So we will get to the part that talks about Henry. All right. Whereas Henry Lee was born in Vietnam in 1995, pursued higher education, attending, hope I get this right, Van Hind University in Ho Chi Minh City.
Close enough.
Close enough, okay. Vietnam.
Yes.
And whereas Mr. Lee ventured to the United States in 2015 to embark on his entrepreneurial journey of innovation and business creation, aiming to make a significant impact in his, in his new community. Whereas Mr. Lee passionately strives to introduce fresh experiences to the people of Cincinnati and enrich the community with innovative cultural and business initiatives. Whereas Mr. Lee started his entrepreneurial journey as a visionary small business owner, launching his inaugural 2,400-square-foot nail spa salon in 2018. Whereas Mr. Lee's latest entrepreneurial endeavor, a BBQ chicken restaurant in the heart of Cincinnati downtown business district, offering authentic Korean chicken and Korean cuisine, enhancing the culinary experience of Hamilton County and providing a unique dining experience that brings the rich flavors of Korea to the local community. And whereas Mr. Lee is celebrated within the community for his genuine warmth, dynamic personality, and unwavering positivity. And his contributions as a small business owner has significantly bolstered Hamilton County's local economy. Whereas through Mr. Lee's dedication to exceptional service and community engagement, Mr. Lee has created numerous job opportunities, supported local suppliers, and fostered a sense of unity and pride among Hamilton County residents. Therefore, be it proclaimed that the Hamilton County Commissioners, on behalf of its residents and the entire community, hereby extends its deepest gratitude and appreciation for Mr. Henry Lee for his contributions to Hamilton County and steadfast commitment to bringing new innovative cultural and business ideas to Hamilton County. Be it further proclaimed that the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May 23rd, 2024 be known as Henry Lee Day in all of Hamilton County. Okay, we're gonna open it up for commissioners and then we'll hear from you directly.
Yeah.
Vice President.
Chris, quickly, I want the address. I haven't been there. I'd like to come on by. Where are you located?
We're located on West Forest Street, 150. Is on intersections of West Forest Street and Arm Street.
Okay, I'm coming down. Thank you for the information. I'm looking forward to it.
It's very good.
Thank you.
Yeah, and it was like, okay, it's 1 o'clock. Maybe we should have had some.
A little behind the curve, sorry.
But it was a big deal, too, to bring this chain, this brand, to Cincinnati and downtown Cincinnati. And it's right near the Covina Center. So it's great to have that, bring that brand to. It's a big deal that she says, "We got that brand coming right here to our county." Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you so much. Welcome. I remember the taste. I was there for the groundbreaking and you guys were very cordial. I certainly enjoyed myself and I plan on coming back. So congratulations.
Thank you. My pleasure.
So now it's your turn.
Yeah, first of all, I want to say thank you to the President Lisa Reese and the Board of Commissioners for having this special announcement. Since I first came to America in 2015, and I never thought I could have gone this far in my life. And I really appreciate that Hamilton County has been giving us Asian community to have a chance to do business here. And, you know, this is a lot different than our countries when we first came here. And you guys have been providing the best chance and opportunity for us to do it. And I really appreciate it, considering the community.
Thank you. And introduce your wife.
Yes, that's my wife, Tara. We're having a new member in September this year.
Awesome. All right, we gonna come around, take a photo with you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll turn it over to Vice President Dre House for your.
Thank you, thank you. I've got a couple proclamations here. The first one is for Karina Wardani. Could you please come forward? Hello, hello. Welcome. So as Commissioner Reese said, the first two paragraphs are the same. And so I'm just gonna read the paragraphs that are related to you. So whereas Hamilton County celebrates and honors the significant contributions of Karina Wardani. Karina Wardani immigrated from Indonesia to the United States when she was just 11 years old. She has since lived in Hamilton County since 2011 and become a naturalized citizen of the United States in 2018. Karina earned her Bachelor of Science in Accounting and Economics from the University of Kentucky. And whereas Karina is the treasurer for Asian Addie and has volunteered for the organization for more than 10 years, as well as being the chairwoman of the Asian Food Fest that attracts thousands of residents to downtown Cincinnati. Karina serves as a board member for the Greater Cincinnati Chinese Cultural Exchange Association that supports cultural and educational programs such as the annual Moon Festival. And whereas Karina now serves as the Senior Analyst in Finance Transformation at Fifth Third Bank, she uses her interests to create a more diverse and inclusive environment. Karina is the co-chair of the AANHPI Business Resource Group at Fifth Third Bank and has led and launched many cultural programs such as the Lunar New Year Celebration, Diwali celebrations, to create a vibrant AANHPI community inside and outside Fifth Third Bank. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners does hereby recognize and celebrate the service and leadership of Karina Wardani in Hamilton County. And our community does hereby proclaim May 21st, 2024 as Karina Wardani Day in all of Hamilton County.
I just wanted to say, your resume is impressive. Thank you for all that you do and have done. And especially the Asian Food Festival, we love it so much. But thank you for everything that you do and congratulations. Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you so much. As was said earlier, the Asian Fest is awesome. And you have extended the knowledge of all of us as far as Asian culture. So I thank you so much.
Also, I want to just recognize that Fifth Third Bank is lucky to have you. And to incorporate your talents into that organization, I'm sure is, is really important by way of the culture of that organization and that company. So thank you for what you're doing there. And with that, we're gonna turn it over to you.
Well, I'm sitting on the shoulders of the Giants, so it's not something that I've built overnight. I have a, I mean, it's just a work of everybody and the team. So, yeah, it's just a labor of love. So it's basically our letter, love letter to the city. So I'm happy to be doing all of it.
Very nice. All right. Thank you. We're coming on around. All right. Next up, we've got Charleston Wang. Stay on your feet, my friend. You're coming to the mic. So whereas Hamilton County celebrates and honors the impact and service of Chinese-American Charleston Wang, who came to the United States at the age of 15 from Malaysia. Charleston Wang Esquire received his Bachelor of Science from the University of Delaware in 1977. He then earned his MBA from Xavier University in 1979 and then received his JD from Chase College of Law from Northern Kentucky University in 1982 and finished off his education by earning his LLM in Comparative Southeast Asian and Islamic Law from Charles Darwin University in 2002. And whereas Charleston Wang has contributed to the Cincinnati community tremendously. Wang served as an adjunct professor for 10 years at the University of Cincinnati and served as a commissioner for the Cincinnati Health Relations, I think that's Humans Relations Commission, from '27 to 2014 and served on the Interethnic Council of Greater Cincinnati from 2004 to 2006. And whereas Charleston Wang is also a past member of Leadership Cincinnati through the Chamber of Commerce and a former recipient of the 40 Under 40 Award from the Business Courier. His enduring work of hosting the Asian American Hour at WAF Radio Station and his presentation on the Chinese Exclusionary Act as the Chamber Lunar Year Gala are two of the many important contributions to the Cincinnati community. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize and celebrate the contributions of Charleston Wang in Hamilton County. And our community does hereby proclaim May 24th, 2024 as Charleston Wang Day in all of Hamilton County.
Thank you very much for all of your contributions that you've made here to Hamilton County. And we really appreciate everything that you have done and all of the credentials that were listed. We just wanted to say thank you and congratulations again. Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you so much. Congratulations again. You have an impressive legacy. So I'm just so proud of what you've done, not only here, but all over regionally. So thank you so much.
Yeah, and you've been quite the mainstay in our community for many, many years. I remember meeting you many, many years ago. So thank you for all that you've done over the, over the many decades here in Cincinnati. And with that, we're gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you. I'll be very brief. As a lawyer, President Reese, Vice President Dre House, and Commissioner Dumas, thank you so much for this honor. And, you know, in my job as immigration lawyer that I'm doing now, it's often a very stainless job in the trenches, so to speak, helping probably the weakest of all our communities, the immigrant, the new immigrant. And I'd like to thank, as you said, the Chamber of Chinese Chamber, Mr. Liu Chen, and also, more importantly, my office staff, Mr. Omar Baal from Mauritania, Ms. Oksana Zaravka from Ukraine, and Mr. Kubat Kubanalyev from Kyrgyzstan. These are my helpers that, without whose help I cannot practice or help the immigrants. And, you know, I, oh, I've been here over 48 years or something. And I've seen changes in this county. And to this present day, all for the better. This county is a great county and heading in a very good direction. And I'm very proud to be still here in Hamilton County. So I thank you all. And also, congratulations to all other people who are here and who have won recognition besides myself. Thank you very much.
We're coming down to get a photo.
Three, two, one. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and the last recognition that I have is for Felicity Tao. Come on up, Felicity. Thank you for coming down. So whereas Hamilton County honors the contributions of Felicity Tao, who came to the United States in 1999 for graduate studies. She went on to receive her master's degree in journalism from the University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign. And whereas, since moving to Hamilton County, Felicity Tao co-founded and co-chairs the Greater Cincinnati Chinese Cultural Exchange Association, which launched cultural and educational programs, including the annual Cincinnati Moon Festival, to celebrate AANHPI heritage meant to foster cross-cultural dialogues and support inclusion in the tri-state area. And whereas Felicity helped bring the Chinese Railway Workers' Photo Exhibit to the Cincinnati and Hamilton County Public Library from Stanford University, offering county residents a rare opportunity to learn about the Chinese-American history. And whereas Felicity acts as the sponsor for several robust youth programs in the AANHPI community to help AANHPI youth embrace their cultural heritage, develop leadership skills, and collaborate with youth from diverse backgrounds. And whereas Felicity has served as a board member and longtime volunteer for Cincinnati Compass, the Asian American Cultural Association of Cincinnati, Greater Cincinnati Chinese Music Society, and Greater Cincinnati Chinese School to serve and advocate for the immigrant and Asian communities in our, in Hamilton County. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize and celebrate the contributions of Felicity Tao in Hamilton County. And our community does hereby proclaim May 27th, 2024 as Felicity Tao Day in all of Hamilton County.
Well, thank you so much of the Board of.
Sorry about that.
Oh, that's okay.
We're gonna honor you first.
You gotta pile it on more. But no, thank you for all the work that you do. We really appreciate it. And certainly your accomplishments and resume is outstanding. And thank you for what you do for Hamilton County. Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you. Congratulations again. And I heard about the educational programs that you have to enlighten all of us about the Asian culture. And we all need to be enlightened about all cultures. So thank you so much.
And I just want to pile on a little bit because you have been very helpful in getting interns in my office. And I want to say that I have learned as much from them as they have learned, I think, from the office. So it's been a real pleasure to partner with you in that way and bring people into the county and make sure they understand the importance of the work that's happening here. It's just been a real pleasure. So thank you. And with that, we're gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you. Well, thank you, President Reese, and Vice President Dre House, and Commissioner Dumas, for giving me this honor. And like a lot of these honorees said, the honor is not just to mine. I stand on the shoulders of a community and many, many volunteers that work along with me, including my husband. me, including my husband, who is here today. So he has been dragged along to many, many volunteer opportunities with me. I want to share this honor with him and all those volunteer colleagues I have in the past 20-something years. So I wanted to make a request here, actually, if I may. I feel like our community is definitely growing in Hamilton County, and our community is coming together. In the past 15 years, I have seen so many community organizations really thrive in this county, and there are so many volunteers and activists in our community, and I see them reach out to the government, to the business, the nonprofit world, to bring visibility into our community and to make sure that our community finds a sense of belonging here. This is our county. This is our home. So my request is to ask our county elected officials to know our community better, to maybe learn about our needs and challenges a little bit better, because Asian Americans are the quote-unquote minority, model minority, which is a term that carries a lot of burden. And our community is very diverse, and we have many, many challenges and needs that may not be understood or supported by, you know, the government, business world, and so on. So I want to invite you guys to know our community better, maybe have some listening sessions, or come to our events to learn about us. And today, I actually came from Cincinnati Compass Board Meeting this morning. It's an immigrant advocacy nonprofit organization, I think many of you have heard. I was shocked to learn that a lot of employers in this region are concerned about promoting the fact they are immigrant and refugee-friendly. As a matter of fact, they need the labor, but they are afraid of promoting themselves as immigrant and refugee-friendly, and do you know why? Because they don't want to be perceived as an employer who excludes US-born labor. And that's just an unfounded statement. It's not true. We need labor. We need, I think there is a current state of the region study by the chamber, and the mission is basically to grow population, grow economy, and grow cultural vibrancy. And the AAPI community, the immigrant community, check all the boxes. So we need these people to be in our region, and we need your support to promote that, and we need your support to encourage businesses and encourage the community to embrace us and make us part of the family and help us find a sense of belonging here. Thank you.
Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you so much. We were tasked to choose some people for Asian American Month, and I chose Dr. Lashmi Samarko, if you will come up front. And I did want to make a comment about our last recipient, that this is exactly why we're doing what we're doing, because we want people to know more about the Asian community and the impact that they're having in Hamilton County. And as was said earlier, we started this about two years ago because we don't want to eliminate anybody or not recognize anybody. And I don't know if you know Dr. Samarko. We were on a panel at Xavier, and I was almost fixed on your hands. And I said gifted hands, and the things that you have to do with your hands every day and every night and every week, and the ability to do this, not in the proclamation, but that you were given the gift to be able to do the things that you do. Now, for those that are watching, you may not know, what does she do with her hands? So let me get started. Um, I won't read the first part, but I'll go down to why I thought it was great to recognize you. Whereas Dr. Lashmi Samarko was appointed Hamilton County Coroner in February 2012, and later elected to the position in November of 2012. And in each general election since then, she is the first Asian Indian ever elected in Hamilton County and the first female coroner. And whereas Dr. Samarko was born in India but raised and educated in Cincinnati, she is a board-certified neuro-radiologist, having attended the University of Cincinnati for Electrical and Computer Engineering at the College of Engineering and the College of Medicine. Dr. Samarko held previous faculty positions at UCLA Medical School and the Cleveland Clinic. And whereas since taking office, Dr. Samarko has been very busy, championed many causes, and is on a number of different boards throughout the community. She has spoken to hundreds of grads of grade school and high school-aged students about the importance of staying in school and avoiding risky behavior such as the use of drugs and alcohol. And whereas Dr. Samarko was married to local orthopedic surgeon Dr. Vincent James Samarko and mother to Josie and James and their pet parrots, cannoli, mango, and spooky ghosts. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners does hereby recognize and celebrate the contributions of Dr. Lashmi Samarko to Hamilton County and to our community. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, does hereby proclaim the 28th Day of May, 2024, as Dr. Lashmi Samarko Day in all of
I'll open it up. Vice President Drehouse?
Well, good afternoon to you, Lashmi Samarko. Glad to be recognizing you here today. We've known each other a long time. I've always known you to be a trailblazer in Hamilton County for your work, both in your office and outside your office. I mean, you are a well-respected person in this community, and people look up to you for all that you've accomplished, and that you were there first for so many of us. So thank you for being here. Thanks for taking the time for the recognition.
Thank you for all your work, particularly your work as a coroner, but also outside of that building. You're out in the community, and I just want to thank you again for all that you are doing and have done and being a trailblazer. So congratulations.
Thank you.
It's on you, Madam Coroner.
Thank you, President Reese, Vice President Drehouse, Commissioner Dumas. When I took this office in 2012, it was supposed to be temporary. Here I am, 12 years later, three elections, still in the office. And to be honest, one of the reasons that I agreed to stay on and serve the county and the people of Hamilton County for so long is because I wanted to set an example for the Asian-American community, because in general, we don't usually participate in politics, and we don't usually participate in community or public service. It's not how we're raised. And education is a huge part of our culture and our traditions and family and being successful, and all those pressures are laid on, you know, Asian-American kids early. And I think everybody in this room knows that and can recognize that and feels that. And it's not that I don't find that to be important as well, because my kids will tell you that they got equal pressure. But I think that my grandfather told me a long time ago that if I had an opportunity to serve my community, that I should take it. And of all my cousins, I think only one other one has done public service. So I wanted to be an example, stepping away from my career and serving my community. I wanted this to be the safest, healthiest, you know, most successful and caring community, and it's my backyard. This is where I grew up, and I wanted to serve the people. And, you know, one of the, two of the things that I really wanted to do in the office was try and get that new building, and, you know, we managed to get that building built and move in, moved in exactly three years ago in May of 2021. So, and we have been able to increase our reach as far as service for our region. We're doing all the forensic science for Dayton Police now and several other jurisdictions around, so we're very proud of that. Second thing was I wanted to get the concept of virtual autopsy up and going. And we have a CT scanner in our new building, and we have been doing virtual autopsies. And I've had several other county offices and other state coroners reaching out to me, asking, how do we do it? What kind of equipment? How, you know, how can they put together a program like that? Well, I don't think they have any radiologists like me available, but they're trying. But anyway, it's been an honor to serve the people of Hamilton County, and it's been an honor to receive this honor. So thank you very much, and thank you for the recognition today.
Awesome.
The next recognition, I'm not sure if I'm going to say the first name right. Hai Kong, please come forward. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. I was involved with your organization last year and came for those dynamic young people that you have there, and there were people from the state, I think Cedric Denson was there. And so you do just great work, you and your team, with the young people. So I wanted to go in and read this. Whereas Hamilton County celebrates and honors the invaluable contributions the AANHPI communities have made to our nation's culture in the arts, law, science, and technology, sports, and public service. And whereas Hai Kong, am I saying it right?
Hai Kong, yes.
Okay, all right. Is the founding member and treasurer of AACO Ohio, leading operations for the AACO Cincinnati Chapter. In addition to her leadership role in nonprofit organizations, she chairs her company's AAPI Associate Group, driving local engagement. And whereas Hai has organized numerous significant events at the city, state, and national levels, including anti-bully and Stop Asian Hate rallies, candidate forums, Asian Heritage Month, and youth mental health seminars. And whereas passionate about youth leadership development, she founded the AACO Ohio Public Service Youth Internship Program, connecting local and state government offices with API young leaders for real work experience. This program has become a signature initiative for AACO Ohio, successfully building a pipeline of API youth in the public service arena. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners does hereby recognize and celebrate the contributions of Hai Kong to Hamilton County and our community. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, does hereby proclaim the 29th Day of May as Hai Kong Day in all of Hamilton County. Congratulations, and thank you for all your work, particularly with the youth and getting them more connected and involved in the areas of understanding and participating with public service. So thank you so much, everything that you're doing and have done. So congratulations again, Vice President Drehouse.
Yeah, I too wanted to mention the youth and the important work that you're doing, breaking down barriers for young people to get involved and for us then to get involved with them. I mean, it's a kind of a two-way street, and so thank you for making those relationships happen.
Thank you so much.
It's on you now.
Well, first of all, thank you, and I don't say thank you just because I'm here. AACO has been here for a while, but seven years ago, we decided to start a public service internship. The reason we decided to start a public service internship because we have seen Asian being perceived as being quiet, and just as many of today's fellows shared, we don't see us have a voice. We don't see us have a seat at the table. But back seven years ago, we, as a part of the Board, and I'm a first-generation immigrant, and I don't see myself how to find a office, accept our interns, because I just never dealt with the public officials seven years ago. But I decided to look up the emails, and I decided just to blast up all of the emails, asking, just simply asking, we have a wonderful youth, and we really like to get involved in public service. Do you guys have any opportunity for us? You guys made it happen seven years ago, and Cedric Denson started opening the door, and our county officials now, the Commissioner Dumas, and, you know, in the future, I want to send more youth. The thing is, the youth is, they start to understand how to earn a voice, how to be able to sit at the table, because by participating, you can't be the sideline. You cannot be just watching. The only way to get involved, to know how the law, how the bill becoming law, how the government impact your daily life, by participating, be part of it. That's the only way. So that's the whole reason I do what I do, but I'm thankful you guys have been here for us and with us every day, and I really looking forward to work with you hand in hand to build a more inclusive and brighter future for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's give a big round of applause to all of our 40 states. Before we go into executive session, I just wanted to, I know we're talking about it later in the week, but it just was hot off the press yesterday. I just want to go on record and thank everyone from the county administration that helped make the Small Business Day a huge success again this year. We had over 1,200 people that RSVP'd, and we had walk-ins, so I don't know, we might people said, man, Hamilton County is really doing it. And people were really helped. It wasn't a leaflet fair. Sometimes you go to these things, there's a lot of just passing of business cards. These were people who said they got real help. Their... The deal room was amazing. The people that were there in the deal room looking to do contract work with folks said the quality of the people that came in there was wonderful. And I just want to give Kelly Adamson and Holly Christman, who kind of helped lead this, I want to give them... I know this is Kelly's first event that she's led since she's had this, and I want to tell them it was wonderful. I want to also acknowledge Greg Forte, the Director of our Office of Small Business, Patrick Longo, and our new product that we have on the streets. I mean, I don't think he could even come up and wave because the people were all over him. And when he was leaving, he said, man, this was fantastic, meeting small businesses that want to own their buildings and complimenting the product that Hamilton County has that no one else has on the streets to help with the downpaving assistance for those folks. So I just wanted to say Jeff Aludo and your team, and Bridget Doherty, all the county staff, all the volunteers. I know our clerk was there. Our clerks were there to also help. Robert Bell, he couldn't hardly get out of the building. Everybody was... And he loved it. Everybody was very interested to hear all the workshops. I'm hearing just, you know, I got a chance to stick my head in a lot of them. Workshops, the free workshops that we were doing, and people were very, very interested and have said it was very, very helpful. So I want to thank them and everyone that was involved. And also want to thank my staff as well, who was involved, helping with, how do we structure it? Veda Stevens, as well as Deontay. So I just wanted to say, everybody and of course, our whole board, we got to kick things off, but it was just great. And to see people that were there last year trying to get, you know, information on their business. And then this year, their business is up, and they have booths now trying to help other businesses. It was just incredible. So I know more will be said about it, but if any commissioners want to say something now. But I just, it's so... I saw Kelly in the hallway, and she said, hey, how did we do? And I'm like, you did a fantastic job. And I just want to make sure that she knows that. So I don't know if Vice President Drehouse or Commissioner Dumas would like to say something. You'll wait? Okay.
Well, it was great. And I'll say more on Thursday. But everyone I talked to, and I went into some of the breakouts, and they were great. It was just fantastic, so.
Awesome. So people can still go online and get in touch with the Office of Small Business, but because it's a year-round thing, but yesterday was great. With that, I will make a motion for us to go into executive session pursuant to 12122G4 to discuss collective bargaining.
Second. Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Samarko Dumas?
Yes.